I'd like to call this meeting to order. Sorry for being a little bit late, but we'll get this underway. Is there any declaration of conflicts of interest? Hearing none. Need an approval of the agenda? Is there any additions or deletions? You cannot make motions in committee of the whole, so it's just going to be by consensus.
Yes.
All right. Any additions, deletions? Hearing none. Item number 4.1, YASTA, Mr. McKenzie, Presentation on Tourism Destination Management Plan. Could you turn on your...I'll turn your mic on. There you go. You have the floor, Neil.
Thank you. Hi, everybody. Are we waiting for any other councillors, or this is it? Okay. All right. So I'm going to try to go through this as quickly as possible without mumbling and rambling, but feel free to interrupt me at any point if you have a question. I won't be offended. And I'm working two devices here at the same time, so this is interesting. So thank you for letting me present today. My goal here is to present YASTA's Tourism Destination Management Plan. So I've shared this full version with you prior to this meeting through Liz, so you should have the full version of the plan. And in the plan, in the executive summary, there's a section that spells out the 18 recommendations. Some, half are short-term and the other half are long-term. So I'm going to try to go through this as quickly as possible, but I'm going to give you a quick little preamble as to how we got there. So in 2017, YASTA staff was tasked by our Board of Directors to develop a five-year strategic plan in November of 2017. And after forging financial partnerships to enable the development of the plan, we started the process of finding a consultant who understood our market and opportunities and was someone who we felt could give us the best roadmap to follow moving forward in 2018 and into the future. And in late 2017, YASTA hired Richard Innis of Brain Trust Marketing. Sorry, I've skipped ahead well ahead here somehow. My thumb must be moving. There we are. I apologize. So in 2017, YASTA hired...see, this is moving ahead now automatically. Why is it doing that? Just going to open that door. In 2017, we hired Richard Innis of Brain Trust Marketing. And Richard came highly recommended by many of his past customers and clients, as well as Tourism Nova Scotia. YASTA developed a Tourism Destination Management Plan against the backdrop of our growing and dynamic tourism marketplace. In 2017, the province realized record levels of visitation. 2017, if you remember, was Canada 150, so there were lots of initiatives in Canada through Destination Canada, the National Tourism Destination Marketing Organisation, to really generate a lot of travel. And it actually worked. 2017, for many places, was...had record numbers. Certainly, Nova Scotia was the largest or the most revenue Nova Scotia's ever had in 2017 for tourism. So it was an amazing year last year. So to capitalize on this growth of tourism worldwide, the Tourism Destination Management Plan is built on a tourism destination management model that suggests tourism destination management is a continuous process of understanding, coordinating, investing, developing and marketing the tourism potential of a destination in ways that provides value to visitors, so communities and businesses as well. See if this works. Okay. So what does this all mean? Basically, seeing the sights is no longer enough. Travelers want to venture beyond the beaten path and dive deeper into what we would call authentic local culture, connect with local people and places in deep and meaningful ways. What was the process that we went through? So a thorough process, a thorough review of the tourism landscape on a global, national, provincial, and a regional approach, including, of course, the Yarmouth and Acadian shores, was done. This also included consultation with tourism stakeholders throughout the region. YASTA held a series of discovery sessions, one-on-one interviews, and a series of group meetings to understand the needs of tourism stakeholders fully and to validate the observations and findings identified in the planning process. A tourism asset assessment was also completed. This assessment captured the majority of Yarmouth and Acadian shores tourism assets and was conducted through a visitor's lens. So what this means is that we used tools that visitors would use to actually use when they're going to consider going to a destination to locate the businesses that were available. So, for example, if they looked through our website and they saw that there was six experiences related to Acadian music, for example, but we actually knew there were 10, then that's presents a gap that we know, okay, we need to fix that because obviously the visitor doesn't know what we know at this level. So these are...it was a good way to do that because it actually did identify a few things that needed to be fixed, so it was a good way to do that. The process also included discovery sessions in January. We did a Brain Trust Marketing and Communications review over 46 reports, plans, and studies. A completed tourism asset assessment, as I just mentioned. We also completed 15 stakeholder interviews between January and February. We prepared a situational analysis from the inputs above. And then after that, we presented our initial findings to the YASTA team, that would be our staff and the Board of Directors, and also to tourism stakeholders in February. Taking that input back from those initial input sessions, we developed the recommendations. That was presented to the Board of Directors in March with feedback and gone back to the drawing table, and then that was presented again to the Board of Directors in April. With final presentation to industry stakeholders in April 5th, we did two sessions, one in town and one in Argyle. And the final report was completed April 13th. The assessment also revealed several unique themes or narratives that, when fully developed, represent opportunities for to differentiate Yarmouth and Acadian shores from other destinations and enhance the success at attracting and increasing number of visitors that come here. So these themes include Acadian culture, dark skies or astrotourism, as we're calling it now, and the indigenous narrative, and fishing heritage and culture. So these are all things that anyone who's familiar with a lot of the stuff that YASTA is doing align with a lot of the content. And this image here, for example, obviously aligns with trying to attract those that would be interested in astrotourism. We've invested a lot in that, as have you. So having compelling themes is not only part of an effective destination management strategy, but we also need to ensure that clear understanding of the ideal guest. So not only do we have to know what we're offering, but we have to know which guests align or are interested in that content. So those who identify with the themes and are willing to take a trip to experience what is offered is the second part of the equation and completes the process. For this reason, Yarmouth and Acadian shores' ideal guests were identified using the same techniques that Tourism Nova Scotia identifies their ideal guests, and you'll be happy to know that these align very well. And Yarmouth and Acadian shores' ideal guests are what we would call authentic experiencers, cultural explorers, and free spirits. Now, these are really just names we've given to traveler segments, which each segment is made up of basically a research that says, okay, an authentic experiencer is looking for this type of experience, and they're from this geographical area. It's not just traditional demographics like age and gender and income. It's also...it includes all that information, but it also includes their values or their travel motivators. And then we try to basically develop a persona for that type of visitor. We use a research program called Explorer Quotient, or EQ. EQ has over 12 visitor segments. I could share some of that with you if anyone's interested. It's on Destination Canada. But the top three that have been identified that align best with what Tourism Nova Scotia has and certainly what Yarmouth and Acadian shores has are those three that I just mentioned, which is authentic experiencers, cultural explorers, and free spirits, which is the latest segment that we're really trying to develop content for, to market to. So, for example, the Acadian Kitchen Party that we developed last year and headed market this year would really align with cultural explorers and authentic experiencers. And the new experience that we just created and are working to put into market in 2019 that would happen at the Lighthouse, as I was mentioning to Patty yesterday, councillor Durkey, will align really well with free spirits, which are really interested in, for example, exclusive and luxury-type experiences. So the plan, getting into the plan now, there were 18 overarching findings that led to 18 recommendations. These recommendations are supported by a series of actions and whose role and responsibility is to implement them. Recommendations also include performance metrics, which allow us to track and measure successful implementation. The planning assumption includes an approach that manages expectations and accepts the capability and capacity limitations of YASTA. It's always nice to say that I have capacity limitations, because I do. Recommendations have adopted a phased approach and are developed based on an immediate term in 2018, 2019, and just into 2020, and long-term 2020 and beyond. So I'm just going to go through those now. Are there any questions so far? Okay. So recommendations 1 and 2. Private sector and public sector tourism operators must come together to understand, embrace, and to be engaged participants in collectively supporting the implementation of the plan. So we all need to basically get together and try to implement the recommendations. Number 2, we need to continue to reinforce the economic value to Nova Scotia and our region, which is provided by the sustainable ferry service from eastern United States to Yarmouth in the region. I don't think anyone in this room would debate that. I would hope not anyway. Obviously, the link to the United States is critical to our tourism industry, and all we have to do is look back from 2009 to 2014 to...and then look from 2014 onward to see that for sure be demonstrated. Number 3 and 4, YASTA, in partnership with the industry stakeholders, should take proactive steps to secure partner funding to implement the recommendations in the plan. This is something really what this means is we need to be looking at trying to implement the recommendations in the plan by forging partnerships or working with partners such as Akoa, Tourism Nova Scotia, our municipal partners, to actually fund some of the recommendations, and this would be done on a project-by-project basis. Number 4, YASTA's Board of Directors would actually take steps to change the levy...YASTA and the Board of Directors would take steps to change the levy formula, funding formula. So currently, the levy in the town of Yarmouth and the municipality of Yarmouth, because the bylaw is in effect here, but there's no rooms, hotels, or accommodations that have over 20 rooms, is in effect. So, for example, if there was a hotel in the municipality of Yarmouth over 20 rooms, they would be required to submit $2 per room per night for any guests who stayed. Currently, this scenario is a static rate, so when revenue per room goes up, for example, in the summertime, revenue has been going up, the occupancy rates have been going up, and of course, room night sales has been going up. We do make...the levy does increase its funding, does make some more money from that because, you know, there's more people coming and they're selling more rooms and occupancy is better. But they're also making more money per room, but the amount they're charging per room is still $2, so they're not increasing their revenue potential. Most other regions, Cape Breton and Halifax, for example, charge percentages, which obviously float based on the revenue per room. And our model is a $2 per night. So that's going to take some work. It's enabled, but at the legislature level first, so that would be one thing that would have to be changed, and then we would also have to change the bylaw and, of course, get our municipal partners to support that. So that would be number 4 recommendation, and there's a lot to that. And the other recommendation in, as part of this recommendation, is that it change from $2 to 2%. It include all roofed accommodations in the region with four or more rooms. And that 100% of the funds collected through the levy flow to YASTA. Currently, the funds from YASTA...sorry, currently, the funds from the levy flow to the town of Yarmouth, which are held in trust. The town of Yarmouth can't use that money itself. The bylaws forbid that. The only people that can use the money is the committee, the levy committee itself, and it has to be used for tourism marketing and product development. So the town of Yarmouth, for example, not that they would do this, I don't want to throw them under the bus, but they can't say, hey, let's take some of those levy funds and build a sidewalk, or let's build some bleachers here, for example. It has to be used for very specific purpose. But currently, there's...the levy is collecting more funds than they're certainly putting into YASTA. They are a full partner of YASTA in the same way that MODI is. But there's funds that could be...that are being left on the table certainly through a change in going from $2 to 2%. And also, that's just being collected now. There's extra money there that could be used for product development or other marketing. Number 5 and 6, the Tourism Destination Management Plan represents an opportunity to review the activities of YASTA's that we annually do and implement. And under this, the leadership of its Board of Directors, YASTA should prioritize the list of programs to be annually undertaken and to eliminate those that are not relevant. So we've already started doing some of this, and really, that is just taking a good look at what we're doing and saying, does this align with our mandate? Does this align with our goals? And just having that conversation each year in partnership with the Board of Directors and our partners. Number 6, develop an event strategy that prioritizes sales activities and targets events that have potential to reinforce the positioning of Yarmouth and Acadian shores and generates incremental overnight business in alliance with available resources and infrastructure to support successful event implementation and outcomes. So what this really means is, and why I have a picture here of our FIN Outdoor event, this is a partnership that we were able to facilitate this year in the town of Yarmouth and in Argyle. This is a...FIN Outdoor is the Atlantic Film Festival, which is normally takes place in Halifax and doesn't have any satellite events. So we're the first region to actually be able to develop a partnership with them, have them come down here and promote us, and it was a good event, a good test, and I think they want to do it again. And this is kind of a way for us to not necessarily have to create our own events at a grassroots level, which we certainly can do, but when there's great, really good events that are happening in Nova Scotia that are generating travel and room nights, a great way to, for us to build on their success is actually just partner with them and say, hey, why don't you take a piece of that event and have it here? And so this is...we're going to try to do this again next...this year. Next year, we've partnered with the Jazz Festival in Halifax, and we're also...I'm going to have meetings with the Devour Film Fest, which is happening in Wolfville this week, because they also partner with other destinations. So the goal is to have that happen next year as well, so something like that happen next year. I'm not sure what that will be.
There's a Dock Fest that happens in Lunenburg as well that might be something to be considered that is in September.
Okay.
Anyone look into that one?
Yep. And that's great, because that's...not only do we want events that align with our differentiators, so, you know, this FIN Outdoor event aligned because we did...we screened MODI, MODI movies, so that aligns with our cultural differentiators that we're trying to target. But, you know, events like Devour, events like our small cruise marketing that we're doing, these are all happening in the fall, which is when we're trying to grow our tourism season, because we have plenty of occupancy and lots of visitors that are coming now. We can always use more, obviously, I'm not going to say no to visitors, but we want to try to grow that growth, move it into September, move it into October. So events that happen in those time periods.
So yes, I know September around the 18th, I believe, is the Dock Fest in Lunenburg, so maybe we can partner with them.
Great. Yep, I'll look into that. Follow-up with me, I'll do that for sure. Moving on here, number 7, recommendations still in the short term here. One of them is to maximize YASTA and Tourism Destination, Tourism Nova Scotia destination marketing efforts. Tourism operators must review their online presence, including their website, TripAdvisor, Facebook listings, and ensure potential customers see appealing content and mechanisms to purchase or reserve their products. What this really means is our operators, some are doing a good job of it, some are struggling with their online presence and, for example, booking engines or being able to take, book their experience online. Their content on their website is not up to date, and people's attention span online is usually less than three seconds. If your page doesn't load on their phone, they'll just leave. If they don't see anything that's enticing, or if they see something that's out of date, they'll leave. So it's a constant effort to keep your content fresh, new, and engaging and up to date, and we just need to keep working at that and making sure we're doing as good a job as we can about that. Number 8, we should take proactive steps to develop, deliver, and market relevant tourism programming under the unique differentiators, Acadian culture, heritage, astrotourism, fishing, and heritage, et cetera, which encourages ferry passengers to stay longer in Yarmouth and Acadian shores. So these are basically developing packages or experiences that align with the ferry passengers and also partnering with bay ferries to push those experiences out to their customers when we're doing that as well. Number 9, take proactive steps to grow visitation starting in October. I just mentioned that. Delivering and marketing visitor activities and experiences that align with our ideal guest profiles and actually occur during October. So things like the Starlight Festival and some of the events that we just mentioned. Number 10, municipal partners to annually increase their contribution to YASTA operating budget for tourism development and marketing at a minimum based on the rate of inflation. And I think we can just make a...someone can make a motion today, we can just approve that right now. (laughter) This is a joke. Sorry, trying to be funny. Finances are never funny. Don't make jokes. Number 11, take proactive steps to bring the municipality of Clare back into YASTA as a formal funding partner. So, as I mentioned before, earlier in the process, that the plan spells out who is responsible to do this and who, you know, and not just this recommendation, but all recommendations. I'm not reading those out, but I will in this case. So this, in this case, this is a...this needs to be a multifaceted approach, so this needs to be elected officials, which is all of you, the YASTA Board of Directors, municipal staff, and the Tourism Destination Management Plan Working Group. So quite a few people. If we're going to be able to partner with Clare again, we have to be able to show them value in our partnership. This isn't just a situation where we say, you need to be back with us because we're doing good things. This has to be a partnership, and for whatever reason, the partnership fell apart last time, which was before my time, I always like to say. We're not going to get them back and working with us in a partnership if we don't, first of all, start talking to them at municipal level. So you guys meet at UNSMs, or sorry, I guess it's the NSFM now. You know, you need to reach out to your municipal partners or municipal colleagues and have those discussions and start talking to them. And I'll be there to facilitate and support anything that we can do that. We'd love to have Clare as a partner again, and they have so much to offer, and I think we also have plenty to offer for them. So that's going to take some work. This is a long-term recommendation, but it's something that I want to continue pushing Number 12, YASTA should take steps to improve the ability of tourism operators to close the sale by completing purchase transactions online, ensuring maximum conversion, and moving YASTA prospects to YASTA visitors. Number 13, take steps to encourage operators to deliver year-round visitor experiences that connect visitors to the identified differentiator theme. So again, this is trying to build tourism in months of the year when we traditionally don't think about tourism. Tourism is sort of ramping down now, our season, but we're lucky that, for example, yesterday we had a cruise ship come in and we were able to inject some money into our economy and keep some of our, you know, our icons actually open. So we actually opened up Cape Frisbee yesterday. There was visitors there from the ship. There was over 90 passengers there, and there was also other people there that, because it was open, were strolled in. I don't know if you were there, but there were so many people around I couldn't remember. But there was other visitors there other than the ship traffic, so it was great to see, so. Number 14, operators in the accommodation and food and beverage sectors must take proactive steps to upgrade and enhance their offering to meet the expectation of today's visitor. So this really means not necessarily renovations to your hotel or restaurant, but maybe improving your cutlery or your tablecloths or your soft, you know, your linens if you're in a hotel, doing whatever you can to try to enhance the experience, because the...we know that the visitors that are being attracted to Nova Scotia are looking for, not necessarily always luxury, but they are looking for quality. And if there's low quality, it impacts all of us, so. Number 15, YASTA should take proactive steps, be proactive and take a proactive role as facilitators for industry equipping in tourism. So industry equipping is why I put this picture up here. So really what this is, is last year, we, the first time, based on plan recommendations, we celebrated Tourism Week, which was the last week of May. And what it was, was kind of getting everyone revved up for the tourism season. We launched our activity guide to everybody, which is completely done in French and English, two versions. We went through the guide page by page, showed everybody who showed up, the new experiences that they could have in the region, and what to tell visitors if they were questioned and asked about this. We really pitched this to frontline staff, so people at hotels or motels or bay ferries staff, anybody who would be a touchpoint for a visitor. We want to make sure that if a visitor says, so where's a good place to eat around here? Where's a good place to...where's a good museum? What can I do with children around here, you know, for kids, what's fun? We want them to be able to say something and have, you know, have some ammunition to be able to deliver that, not just shrug the shoulders and say, I don't know, there's nothing to do around here, which we occasionally hear happens, but actually, in reality, the majority, that isn't the case. It's just we hear about the negative when it's negative, so. It is getting better, and we are trying. So we're going to keep doing some more of this. It takes a lot of work to actually do this, but we're going to keep doing that, and we see it as a positive thing for the industry. Number 16, YASTA should transition its role as a tourism industry advocates by facilitating a process that sees tourism leaders take more of a prominent position in advocating for or against tourism industry issues at the government level. So what this really means is Yarmouth and Acadian shores, the Board of Directors and I often, and will continue to, take a position on anything that impacts tourism positively or negatively. However, we need municipal councillors, we need certainly our tourism operators who have a lot of weight with certainly the government of Nova Scotia to speak up when things are impacting them. So I'm always going to have a positive position on Yarmouth and Acadian shores and investing in tourism investment, but when negative things happen in the region, it can't just be me, and it can't just be the Board of Directors. It needs to be tourism operators that are going to be impacted negatively to their bottom line, to their business. That's who our MLAs are going to listen to, and that's how, who our tourism...sorry, that's who the province of Nova Scotia is going to listen to when there's issues that affect them. When they affect business people, that's what they really offer credence to, so. Number 17, YASTA should address basic infrastructure gaps that are negatively impacting the visitor's journey. So these are things, and I know councillor Durkey is passionate about this and all of you as well, with regards to upgrading infrastructure, so things such as Wi-Fi, public bathrooms, signage, parking, things that maybe not be the fun part of the marketing piece, but they're basically the platform that would allow me to market things like Port Maitland Beach or the light Cape Frisbee. You know, the investment that's been put out there in infrastructure's been very welcomed, and it allows us to have this platform where we can do experiences and offer new experiences to visitors. And again, yesterday, they really loved the whole experience. The fog was there, but they still enjoyed themselves, and we continue to be able to do more experiences like that because we have platforms to do it. So keep going, keep building on infrastructure, that's the key. And we're going to end on infrastructure, which is, I'm pleased that we're able to actually check this box. This was one of the long-term recommendations, was take proactive steps to ensure upgrades to the Yarmouth Ferry Terminal. So I'm really pleased to see that in the time that this presentation was created, this has actually happened. So kudos for that. Good job. Successful implementation of the recommendations will require dedication, focus, and commitment over the long haul. It will require all involved to understand the upside opportunities and effective destination management. And operators must understand and engage in development and promotional activities in their businesses. Municipal partners must also take up their role in terms of being active in destination development activities. And finally, the YASTA Board of Directors must take responsibility, being accountable to the plan implementation, and monitoring the implementation of it and monitoring the progress as well, and reporting back to partners like you. So I thank you very much for my present, allowing me to present today, and I hope I haven't taken up too much of your time. It was a lot to cover, but thank you very much. Are there any questions, if there are any?
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. A good presentation, very, very important topic, so no, you haven't taken up too much of our time. Just a...it's a positive thing, a positive element that we're able to secure the funding for the upgrades to the ferry terminal. That's needed. But longer term, what are some of the...that's one asset that we've kind of checked off, and it's an important piece. What are some of your thoughts and YASTA's thoughts about, I mean, we had a cruise ship in here, a mid-sized cruise ship, I'll call it. It's not a small ship.
Right, right.
I think it has to more off, off in the harbor somewhere, over harbor, and then they transport people in by tender and so forth. So are there pieces of infrastructure that we could invest in that would make that part easier, be able to track? I mean, there's lots of cruise ships in the Bay of Fundy, St. John, Bar Harbor, Portland, going around to Halifax. I'm not that certain of the goings and comings, but I know there's a big, fairly substantial volume of ships out there, and I know some of them are very, very large, obviously, and sort of exceed the capacity of Yarmouth Harbor. Any talk about what we could potentially look at longer term to get into that? Because Yarmouth's wonderful, it's got a...I mean, we've invested a lot, the municipality has, in the Cape Frisbee site, and it's a world-class site, and it's only getting better year over year, so maybe just... Maybe just some comments there.
Sure. So, for, so some of the things that YASTA's doing, and of course, you're funding us, so we're using your investment in us to actually facilitate more tourism product. So, the small cruise market, we started in that, basically trying to get into that market in 2016. So, we did a port analysis, or basically an assessment of the region, and said, "Okay, what experiences do we have? What port infrastructure do we have? What are the things we need to do? What are the pros and cons? What are the benefits we have?" And one of the big benefits we have here, obviously, is customs. We have, you know, customs clearance here. The, and we also now have multiple security plans for different areas along the Yarmouth Harbor. But yesterday, what was identified, which was interesting, and you pointed it out, is that the ship actually could come into the port. The draft was a little too close for the captain to decide that he wanted to do that. It was going to be low tide, so he decided he wasn't going to take the chance and break that ship. And I could understand that, or risk anything, so. The tender was about a 15-minute to 20-minute tender for the passengers. However, once they got there, the welcome center was great, and then we were able to bus them out to Cape Frisbee. But one thing that we talked about to the expedition coordinators and the landing crew was that would they consider, for example, landing at the Yarmouth Bar and then have a shorter commute to the lighthouse? And these guys in the MS Fram, they market what's called expedition cruises. So, they're in the Arctic, they're landing these Zodiacs. These people that take this cruise, these guests are expecting to rough it a bit. They're not looking for luxury, they're looking to actually get their feet wet and be in spaces and places where they can actually take pictures and say, "Hey, look where I am, and this is a penguin," or "I'm in this jut of land at the tip of Nova Scotia," for example. So, one of the things we could look at is maybe seeing what would be available to create security plans at, let's say, the Yarmouth Bar, or even Cape Frisbee. What would be involved to create a security plan so that the MS Fram, for example, could land passengers there if those passengers were interested in the experience at Cape Frisbee? My goal would be, and I intend on doing this over the next six months with the MS Fram, because they have scheduled times to come back, is to develop more experiences that would give their guests more opportunities to decide what they want to do. So, the why we chose Cape Frisbee, for example, is they contacted us this time directly, which is a positive, because last time, they're dealing with ambassadors in Halifax. So, now they've, we've developed a relationship, so they're talking to us. We created an itinerary. The itinerary they wanted was the lighthouse itinerary, we created that for them and delivered it. And it was a good thing, they were really happy. But it would be great if we could offer two or three options for their guests that could be pre-sold. So, when they book that trip on the MS Fram, they can say, "Oh, I'm going to do a week on the MS Fram, which is going to go here, here, and here. And I'm also going to do this experience in, when they dock in Yarmouth and Canadian Shores, it's a lighthouse experience with lobster and et cetera. Or I'm going to do this downtown experience, which is heritage house homes and some, maybe a brewery tour or something. And where I'm going to do this other one, that's the village in Pumneco, immersed in Canadian culture." So, my goal is to create four or five experiences and itineraries for them that they can pre-book or pre-buy as visitors, or, sorry, as passengers on the boat. But getting back to your infrastructure piece, I think that would be something we could look at. Can we, you know, because they could land those boats right on the, right on a very rocky beach, or anything very similar. We could even land them, excuse me, right at Johns Cove beach. If, but the key is, they're coming in, they're international passengers, they've already been cleared in customs in Halifax. So, in some cases, we don't need to have a security plan, like a customs-level security plan. You just need to have a safe landing area. But, you know, we can explore those things with the Industrial Commission would be two things that I would look at doing. Infrastructure with regards to things like at the lighthouse has been great, but like wifi there would be great, because that would enhance the opportunity for sharing in those locations. So, if you're a visitor there and there's free wifi, it basically entices you to share that content that you're in that location. Improved bathroom facilities there would be better. There really wasn't that much of a challenge with the golf cart now. There's really not that much of a challenge with getting people up and down that hill. If that's done effectively, it's good, and that worked out pretty well yesterday. You could even look at accommodations out there. I mean, if we're thinking big, you know? Something, something that you could, I'm not sure what it would be, but it would be pretty neat. And people are looking for that special niche thing, so. Our, the market we're trying to approach for small cruises is what we would call niche port. We were considered a niche port now, and we work with the Atlantic Canada Cruise Association. So, we've been basically vetted by them to say, "Okay, Yarmouth and Canadian Shores, the region is ready to accept small cruise ships." And it's working, it's slowly working, so. And also, you know, things like signage, I think you're doing some signage work now to identify locations, but do that with a visitor's lens. So, it's not just to say, "Okay, this is this village, there, we put a sign up that identifies this area." Well, what's in this area? What's there that a visitor would want to do? What's special about this area, you know? Think from a visitor's perspective, not just from a perspective of identifying boundaries and things like that. And that might lead you to think, "Okay, well, we should invest in wifi at the lighthouse, or proper signage at Johns Cove, or parking at Johns Cove." And I know those are all challenges, because you have to work with the province and other things like that, but, you know, basic things, infrastructure, be that, create that platform so that we can then market experiences on them, you know? The Sanford Drawbridge is another location. Visitors are already going there, but the infrastructure there isn't up to par for visitors, right?
Councillor Durkey?
Thank you, and thanks, Neil. You know, I'm a huge advocate of the area, and we'll always work towards improving whatever we can in the tourism industry, which is improving, and things are getting better. And that was pretty obvious yesterday at the presentation by Tourism Nova Scotia. One of the things I was just thinking in terms of what councillor Cunningham said is that, and what was mentioned to me is that we, yes, we have to improve some of our facilities. And I was thinking, I know a while back, we had discussed working with Lands and Forest with regards to Port Maitland Beach and improving the facilities there, because that's what people want. They don't want to go into outhouses, they want to go into clean bathrooms. So, I think we had discussed a meeting quite a while ago, but that hasn't come to fruition. So, I'd like to look into that, meeting with Lands and Forest, and maybe Development Nova Scotia could help us with that. And I don't know how you would do wifi at Port Maitland Beach, but that would be a great thing to offer as well. So, we can figure out how to do that and try and help facilitate.
I think you had mentioned webcams.
Yes, oh, that was the other.
You know, that's a quick way. So, for example, the lighthouse, when we had the movie shooting there, that webcam received over 100,000 additional users because of that event that was there, so. And the webcams work, and they're infrastructure that allow you to provide some marketing. People get, people actually do still use them, and they don't really require that much work once they're installed. So, that's a piece of infrastructure that, that would really, to me, that fits well within a municipality's kind of mandate, so.
Great, maybe that's something we can discuss. Thanks.
I'd be willing to speak to anyone at Nova Scotia Parks or whoever, because I think they're also underutilizing the parks in all of Nova Scotia. The provincial parks aren't being marketed fairly, and I think we need to keep pushing on that front for sure.
What I noticed was that Port Maitland Beach, or any of the other beaches in this area, are not considered as the quote-unquote "best beaches on novascotia.com." So, what I've asked for is the members of the team that were here yesterday to forward to me the requirements that are needed in order to get us into that list.
And I think you won't be surprised, but I'm done, but some of those are, you know, flushing toilets, showers, parking, signage, which all generates users to go, which generates traffic on things like social media and Instagram, which is some of the content that they're listening to. So, I think they're looking at it and going, "What is the highest-rated beach on TripAdvisor in Nova Scotia?" Well, it's the one, obviously, that's in the largest population area, probably. So, you know, Lawrence Town, or Martinique, or these other beaches that are close to major centers. But they also get more recognition because, more people go because the facilities are better. So, it's kind of the chicken and the egg, I'm not sure. But in our case, I think we have to make the investment, take the risk, and say, "We're going to invest in these places, create better platforms, and then people will come."
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Is there any questions to start?
I guess from my perspective, I just want to be clear that, you know, when we're talking about investing in the area, the dialogue is largely around roles and responsibilities as well. So, while the document that you presented today is completely on the mark in terms of philosophy and theories, we want to be careful that municipal government does what it's legislated to do, and that we work with the provincial government to point out areas where they could do a better job in their lane.
Yep, that's great.
All right, thank you very much, Neil.
Thank you.
All right, item 4.2, Roger Devine, Tiny Homes, from council, June 27th. Sorry, Roger, you're a little bit late. No worries. We are a little bit late getting out of camera, so. You have a floor.
Thank you. So, I was asked to come and just speak about tiny homes in general, just sort of an informal conversation about it, to sort of inform councillors a little bit as to what's going on with tiny homes these days, and what we classify as tiny homes. So, I'll give it a shot. Neil's a hard guy to follow, he's, he had a good presentation there, so. So, we're hearing more and more about tiny homes all the time at the Development Office. And as recently as this week, we've had conversations about tiny homes and all their various shapes and sizes. And the latest one is more to do with shipping container-type tiny homes. But they do come in all shapes and sizes. The common element there is that they're essentially smaller than your average home. So, if you look at some of the advertisers on television, such as people from Cottage Country and their associated developments, they refer to many things as tiny homes. And they're, essentially, they could look like small cottages, or they could be extremely small. But they kind of lump everything into one group because it's kind of the, a nice catchphrase these days. They call them all tiny homes. There are also structures that are on wheels that are referred to as tiny homes, and there are structures that are off-wheels, with no wheels, that are sitting on the ground that are referred to as tiny homes. And again, as I mentioned before, they could be things such as a modified shipping container. So, the way we are, we have to deal with tiny homes as of right now with the current rules is that the Nova Scotia Code Authority, along with the Nova Scotia Building Official Association, have basically said that if a structure is on wheels, we would simply classify those as illegal, such as an RV, or like a camper trailer, and we wouldn't have any jurisdictions over them whatsoever. Now, if the structure is not sitting on wheels, then we apply the building code to that structure. So, that's where some of the, perhaps the difficulty in modifying or creating a building that's not on wheels comes, to try to satisfy the requirements of the building code. So, some of the things that the building code requires are, and I'm sorry, do we have a bit of an echo here? Are proper stairs closer to, okay. Are code-compliant stairs and the guards. So, if they want, say, a little loft, the code only allows you right now to do a full-size stairway, which is very difficult when you're trying to fit that into a tiny home. Ceiling heights, there's a minimum ceiling height that's in the building code that they would have to satisfy. There's requirements for a certain amount of insulation because of the new energy requirements. They have to be able to fit a certain amount of insulation in the walls, and that also reduces the size of the interior of the tiny home. There's a requirement for mechanical ventilation. So, if they build one of these and it's not on wheels, they would have to put in, essentially, an HRV or a similar type of ventilation equipment. Any windows that are going to be used for sleeping areas are, would have to be, they would have to be egress windows or large enough to jump out of, unless, of course, everything's in one room, and then the door would suffice. And there are requirements also for doorway sizes. So, I had made some notes here, let me see. So, whichever way the people propose to build the structure, if it's going to contain electrical wiring, then it needs an electrical permit. So, Nova Scotia Power have directed us to tell us about their requirements. And what it is, is that if a building is going to be built on wheels and brought to a site, they will not allow the power to be hooked to the building unless it's had wiring permits and wiring inspectors throughout the construction, inspections throughout the construction. So, we're making everybody aware of that. Now, if a building is going to be stick-built, built onsite without wheels, then that would happen normally anyways. So, I guess it's just overlapping jurisdictions there, but, so, I guess the key is that if people decide they want to build a tiny home, we're perfectly in favor of that. But they just need to be aware of the overlapping rule where they might have to have electrician go in, get a permit. They would have to have that in order to have it hooked up to any type of power source, like to the power lines. And I think that's pretty much all I wanted to touch on, except for answer any questions that you might have.
Roger, is there a maximum square footage for a mini-home?
No, not at all. There's no, there's not a minimum nor a maximum for them. It's, a lot of people refer to things that I wouldn't normally think of as a tiny home as a tiny home, so there's really no square footage.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Roger, any, do you know of anybody in the municipality or any interest in having, I know in some cities, they have floatable tiny homes. So, I mean, you can rent up in Boston, you can rent a hotel room on the water, there are those options. Anybody ever come to you about building on a lake, or in the ocean, a home, or a small home, or a cottage, or floatable? Because they do exist. Is that something you've considered in the, or no?
So, only one time did this come, did this come across my desk, and it was, it was one gentleman who, I think his purpose was to try to avoid having a building, getting a building permit, that mentioned that he would build whatever he was going to do on pontoons on the lake, and then the building code wouldn't apply. And actually, I agree with him. There would be a way to get out of those, that type of rules and regulations. Of course, I'd always be wondering, like, how are you going to satisfy the requirements of the Department of Environment for your black water and gray water and that? But no, that's, it's only been suggested once, but no movement there that I've heard or any type of large development that way. That's probably been seven or eight years ago.
Councillor Durkey?
Thank you. Roger, you mentioned about insulation, et cetera. If someone was going to build a tiny home to be used for the summer, do they have to follow that building code?
Yeah, that's sort of a, it is a bit of a gray area at times. But our policy in the Development Office and with most billing officials in the province is that if you insulate a building, and if you put in an automatic source of heating or cooling, then we just consider those dwelling. We don't differentiate between seasonal dwelling and non-seasonal dwelling. So, if one of these structures were going to be made essentially very rustic, to be used only in the summer months, and they weren't going to install insulation, then we wouldn't apply that part of the code. But they would have to be quite rustic for that.
And what if they were like 200 square feet?
Yeah, so there's no size requirements. I think where the confusion may lie there is that... lie there is that in the municipality, any structure up to 215 square feet requires a development permit and anything over the 215 square feet requires not only development permit but a billing permit as well. When that, that 215 square feet in the Nova Scotia Billing Code Regulations only applies to accessory buildings, so it doesn't apply at all to dwellings, so there's no size, minimum size for the dwelling portion, but the, that is only for single story residential accessory buildings, that that requirement for having a, only a development permit and not a billing permit. If a building were, can be considered as a dwelling, they would require both and the size wouldn't even come into the equation.
Okay, but if it was on wheels, does that still have to, that's completely different?
Right, so on wheels, we, we actually have no jurisdiction over them, so they could, if a person wanted to put a, what they call a tiny home on wheels on a lot, say by a lake somewhere, they would perfectly be, it'd be okay for them to do that without coming to permits, for permits to us, I guess, if I said that right. They would have to be pretty cautious though about Department of Environment requirements and if they wanted power to that again, they would have to deal with Nova Scotia Power and getting the proper wiring inspections and and permits.
And what about sewage?
Yeah, that's the environment, yeah. So if they do want to create, if they are going to create black or gray water that they're not going to remove from the site themselves, they would have to definitely have approval from the Department of Environment for some sort of a system that's, that meets the Department of Environment Regulations and it wouldn't be something we'd even be asking about, not if it's on wheels.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Roger, I have one quick question, it's in regards to the federal building or provincial building codes, is there any move afoot to to address tiny homes that you know of?
Yeah, the, the billing, billing advisory committee and the fire marshal's office who have the, the billing code coordinated for the province, he works for them, there is some discussions on relaxing the regulations for tiny homes, but it hasn't happened yet. So in turn, it may be that they require perhaps a different type of stairway, that might be more something you can actually fit into a tiny home, or it might be that they require a little bit less insulation perhaps, but it hasn't been approved yet, so that's, that movement would have to happen on a higher level than than our office.
The reason why I say that, I, I agree with the concept of tiny homes, but, but when you talk about stairways, if you have a two code stairway, that's going to take up technically half of your, of your space now.
Exactly.
So, so they wouldn't allow like a ladder to get up to a loft or?
No, but that is part of the conversation to allow that type of thing.
Is there any ETA that you know of that, that this may be discussed or moved on? Because I'm hearing more and more through, through the municipality where I travel, of course, we know there's a lot of seasonal cottages, but there's a lot of people looking just to build a small tiny home on, on, on a, on a lake or, or a stream or wherever their, their favorite fishing hole is.
Yeah, so I have no, no estimates as to when they might implement this, but it would have to be done through the province, it would have to be a change to the Nova Scotia Billing Code Regulations, they could, they do amendments from time to time, but I have no actual timeframe for you.
Maybe that's something that our council could discuss in regular council, possibly sending off a letter seeing, because it's not only this municipality that's having issues like, like you're, like we're talking about, it's all across the province, I'm sure. Is there any questions to staff? Nope, hearing none, and seeing no more microphones flashing, thank you very much Roger.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. All right, moving on, item number five point one sewer rates from the May 18th pre-budget meeting, CAO Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So when council was preparing the statement of estimates with staff this spring, there was some discussion around possibly directing staff to do a thorough analysis on our sewer rates. The notion was we wanted to make sure that the rates that were being levied were accomplishing the goals of the bylaw in terms of capital replacement and covering the actual maintenance and repairs cost. So the minutes indicate that this was to be brought back to council in September or October, so I am bringing it back and probably by consensus, council can direct us to undertake that analysis.
What I'm seeing here, what I'm seeing here is there is consensus to move forward with that analysis, as we all remember in our last budgetary meeting that we were starting to fall a little bit behind and that was a concern of mine and we'll move forward. Item number six point two Port Maitland Sewers Treatment Plant Possible Meeting With Government Officials' Departments, CAO Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as we've been working through the issues that are present in and around the beaches and waters at Port Maitland Beach, this municipality has assumed a leadership role in terms of bringing government agencies together to try and identify what is present in the water and where is it coming from. So my brief today is essentially to make council aware that on the direction of the warden, staff is pulling together representatives from Fisheries and Aquaculture, Nova Scotia Department of Environment, Department of Fisheries and Oceans, the Canadian Coast Guard, MP, MLA and municipal representation to have a conference call to talk about process and investigation protocols in an effort to try and figure out who can answer what questions and come to some sort of resolution for the residents of Port Maitland.
Councillor Durkey.
Yes, this whole scenario in Port Maitland is concerning to all our residents. This isn't just about our beach and not being able to access it, it's about the fact that, you know, we have a lobster pound there that services many people, we have lobster fishermen and I think we really need to, they would really like to know, the residents want to know what is actually being done, because they haven't heard anything concrete, they want transparency about what each group is doing and they need to know soon because it's getting further and further from when this was first announced. So the sooner that we can meet with government officials and at least tell them what's happening, I know that it would be appreciated.
Okay, any more discussion on that item? Hearing none, item five point three Commercial Green Bin Cleaning Service, Councillor Cunningham. You have a floor.
Right, I just wanted to bring it to people's attention, we talked a lot about the green car pickup and so forth, but in the city, there is a commercial green bin cleaning service and just wanted to bring it to folks' attention, I mean, that would be a private sector where they come in and they charge so much for a one-time cleaning or they'll do it every month or every two weeks, however many times you want, it's quite pricey if you Google it, but I just wanted to bring it to residents' attention here and if any of you councillors, just to make, just to make everybody aware of it, make staff aware of it, I don't know what we could do with that, but there is a service available, probably better in, in the town where it's even tighter. Some people did want their, a minority of people did want their green bins collected weekly. It's a good thing obviously for, for cleanliness, but on the other hand, staff to their credit did look into it and the costs of doing so would be exorbitant, so really prob- probably that's as far as we can go with it, but I just wanted to bring that to folks', folks' attention, thank you.
Thank you very much, any more discussion? Hearing none, move on to items number six, new business. Item six point one Yarmouth County Agricultural Society requests for 2019-2020 grants.
So essentially, Mr. Warden, this group applies to other levels of government to support their activities and when they submit those applications, they annually include a comment on the municipality of Yarmouth's intention to support an application through our grants process, so it's something that we do every year, that we bring forward every year and just seeking consensus to go ahead and indicate to them that there would be no change this year.
That the list is the council? Okay, I guess I have a question as chair to the CAO, do we not move that forward to the regular council meeting for, for approval? Because in previous years, we had moved that and pre-approved out of our grant request of, this, this one would be out of the 2019-2020 request, so do we not do that?
So if you want to categorize it pre-approved, then it would require a motion of council on October 24th.
Okay, so I guess the consensus is to move this forward to a regular council meeting number 24. Trevor.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I would, I would say that we'd be safe and saying $500 for a huge bank, we've always done it, so maybe we could approve it formally at the meeting, but it would be nice to be able to get back to the, to the group and say, yeah, there's, there's no problem, so we could write a letter supporting the interim and just, it's going to be a formality, I'm sure, if everybody's agreeable to it, that we'd have the CAO write the letter saying, yes, we're going to support it and just, just make the, make the motion to actually do it on, but in, in, in principle, we support it, so that would allow, allow them to get on to do it.
Absolutely. All right, moving on. Item six point two e-voting, that's me, as we all know, we're halfway through our term for this council. Over the years, we, we have discussed the possibility of e-voting and I'm not exactly sure what that entails, so I guess my suggestion to council would be, is that, that we direct staff that we start to get some information on the subject because two years is going to be up here very quickly and I believe that we should be moving forward rather than waiting to the last minute to get information on e-voting. I'm not exactly sure still at this time if I would like to proceed or just do what we normally do with the normal paper ballots, there is a lot of concern out in my area where some people don't have internet service, I'm not sure if e-voting only involves internet connections or if it's phone lines or what it is, so I'd like to get some information, so I guess my suggestion to council would be to direct staff to start compiling some information, have some possible people come talk to council, I do know the municipality of Argyle has gone through e-voting and so has the council, maybe some information from their CAOs would be helpful, because this is something that we're definitely need to look at in, in the very near future. Is there any other discussion on that? Councillor Cunningham?
Yeah, I, I concur with looking into it, certainly we need to do our due diligence around that, but I'd also like to add, and it's an associated matter, that I think we should think about as a council, looking at our governance structure generally, and I'm not saying what we're doing now with the, with the seven districts, I mean, I'm incumbent, I'm, it's been, been successful in, in being re-elected, but what I'm saying is, is that the best governance structure for the municipality district of Yarmouth? Others have, looking at, at Queens, they have a number of councillors elected from the whole and then a, a mayor, so, I mean, I, I, I think that we should consider, and there's only four of us here, but I think we should consider looking at those options and maybe taking it to the public and seeing what, what folks want, if they want to remain, if they want the status quo, maybe looking at the pros and cons, what some other jurisdictions have done. I mean, I, I'm not saying there's anything wrong with the status quo, I think our council works, works well together, but our, i- i- is, is there some advantage to a, a, a different, a different electoral system within the municipality of Yarmouth? I'm not sure of that and I'm not sure residents would support that or not, but I think that we should, should look at that, because governance is at the core of what we really do, so I'll, I'll make those comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'll just share, in 2012, Shelburne had their first e-voting system and their voter turnout was 66.9%, and in 2016, 20 municipalities offered a combination of e-voting, telephone voting, both, so it's definitely on trend, 20 on 50 municipalities, so.
Yeah, that's always been an issue of low voter turnout in rural, especially rural municipalities and I'd like to see people exercise their vote and sometimes they cannot or don't have the transportation. Councillor Durkey?
I couldn't agree more, I, I think that we should be offering alternative ways to vote in combination with the regular system, but I think it would increase our voter turnout.
So I guess at a future date, staff will come forward with some recommendations and possibly someone to fill us in, thank you. Item number six point three under new business, email from Waste Check and Department of Environment Instruction Elimination Discussion Paper, that is all in your package and as you see, the, the date to respond is over, I believe it was, I can pull it up here, September the 28th? Yeah, Friday, September the 28th was the deadline for the three month extension to comment on this and as you can see in your package, there's comments that are, that our warden has put in, if you want any, any more information on that, I guess you'd have to contact the warden because I'm not privy to a lot of the information in that committee, so that's for your information. Item number six point four Criminal Record Check Fees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I received correspondence from the municipality of Argyle who was reviewing fees and wanted to recommend to their council that they remove the fee for having criminal record checks done. Currently, the way it works in the municipality of Yarmouth is that if an individual wants a criminal record check done, that individual has to come here and pay the fee. Our fees are $5.75 for a student, $23 if it's for a job, and then if it's for a volunteer position, it's no charge. So come here, pay the fee and then go to the rural detachment of the RCMP and make the application for the criminal record check. So basically, what we're looking at, Argyle and, and the district of Yarmouth is, really should we, should we be charging for that? It's, it's nominal fee, it's an inconvenience to the residents to come here and pay the fee and then go to the detachment, and so my recommendation would be, first of all, this, these fees don't appear in our fees policy, we actually don't have them written down, they don't appear. And secondly, that we waive, we waive those fees, criminal record checks are part of everyday life now, I think that in terms of economic development and having an open, vibrant community where lots of things are happening, it's just something that's required more and more often and if we can cut a little bit of red tape, I would recommend that we do that.
Councillor Cunningham?
So is, because it is a very small money matter, we should probably take it to, to council for, for approval to move forward, I'm agreeable with the, with the suggestion of, of, of our CAO, so I, I'd make, I'd certainly make that a suggestion.
All right, we have consensus, I guess we'll move that forward to the regular council meeting. Moving on, item six point five Asset Management Free Request For Councillor Appointment.
Have all the councillors had the opportunity to review the brief that was included in your agenda package? So just very briefly for the benefit of the record, asset management is going to be a new reality for local government and government in general. Asset management is a term that's being given to the comprehensive management and operations of assets. Assets include buildings, include systems, include things like treatment plants, active transportation trails, water utilities, whatever you have that you're using to deliver government to your, to your electorate. And so the move across the country is that we have a more proactive approach to managing assets. Everybody's aware of the infrastructure gap that exists in Canada in terms of what we could be investing in and the money that's available to do that investing. So essentially, we want to mitigate risk and we want to make wise investment in operational decisions. So in Nova Scotia, Atlantic Infrastructure Management Network is the association that's delivering support to small and medium sized municipalities in order to launch asset management activities within their organizations. This municipality has had the opportunity to respond to an expression of interest where- This municipality has had the opportunity to respond to an expression of interest whereby we can participate in a cohort or pilot and launch our asset management activities and work for the significantly reduced price of $3,900 plus HST where we would have to go to market and hire consultant to do that for us outside of this opportunity. And as I'm sure you can imagine, the consulting dollars would be significantly higher than the $3,900. This type of activity is going to mean for our organization, something very similar to health and safety. It's going to be everybody's responsibility to look after what we have, to make it last as long as we can, to help point out risk, mitigate risk. Everybody in the organization is going to have a role. This particular activity is about getting us started, getting us out of the gate, creating our policy and legislative framework, doing some training at the executive level and then roll that training across the organization. So because it's everybody's responsibility, it's not just staff who will be undertaking this work, there's a role for council. So in the cohort group, I need, I need council to appoint a councillor to work with me and other directors who are working on the cohort team so that we can move through this process and get this launched for this municipality. Counselor Cushing is not here today, but he did read the brief and he has asked that his name be submitted.
Councilor Cunningham?
So I'm, I'm assuming this needs to be done by motion of council, so I would suggest that through, through you, Mr. Chair, to our C.A.O., is that, is that correct, that it would need to be done by motion or is, I mean, appointments are always done through motion, but?
So, so yes, if you would recommend this to council, then that would be great.
We'll all recommend Counselor Cushing for the position at, I'll move it at, at the, the, the council.
All right, is there other wishes of other council? Any more discussion? Okay, we'll move that forward to the next regular council meeting. Okay, item 6.6 For Your Information, the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities Board Report. You all have that in your package, the board initiatives report and the advocacy days from 2018. Any comments or concerns in that regard? Hearing none. Move on to item 6.7 Letter Thanks For The Assistance During The Summer Growth.
So I've had a discussion with our acting emergency measures coordinator and we're in agreement that we're going to wind down our response to the water shortage issue. So we do have a supply of four-liter jugs of drinking water that are, is available to continue to distribute through our three retail locations and we're going to do that until that supply is gone. Making water available at the Mariner Center, the municipality of Argyle, EMC, and our EMC have recommended that we cease making that available at the Mariner Center at no charge on Friday, October the 19th, but that we continue to make tokens available through Town Hall for anybody who's experiencing a water shortage moving forward and we can reevaluate the availability of those tokens at a later date. So we know that we've had significant rainfall in the last three weeks and it has made a difference. The demand at the Mariner Center has dropped off significantly. So I wanted to make council aware that that was the recommendation of the EMC and that we are moving forward in that vein. And what staff have, have noted is that, a couple of things. So first of all, it's several people and several groups that have come together to make this response a success. And so typically, the district of Yarmouth acknowledges when people step in and help provide solutions. So it's our recommendation that by consensus of council, letters be sent to those who performed an activity on behalf of this council in response. So the Mariner Center, ground search and rescue, the three retail outlets who didn't charge us anything to distribute the water or store the water, those sorts of things.
Councilor Durkey?
Thank you very much. That sounds great to me. What I'd like to comment on is that according to scientists, this is something that's going to be happening on a more frequent basis and I feel that in future, we must be much more proactive and be prepared for this. I think we were a little late coming together to offer assistance, so I think that's something that we should discuss in future. Another, even a thought is, do we, do we drill a well and have water available somewhere on our own property so that people can have access to it? Just a thought for future discussion, but to be prepared in case it happens again next year.
Counselor Labonne?
I, I have a drilled well. It's called Lake George and I offered it to all my, and not one came to my house. So I'm, I'm just wondering if that would be a good thing to, to do, just, just thinking.
I don't have the figures back from the Mariner Center to give council a sense of the volume of water that was distributed. The manager at the Mariner Center is working on that analysis for us now. So we will have the figures in the next month or so on, on how much water was distributed there.
Also, I do know that the, the old Arcadius Building School property had a, had a gallon meter and I know that that was used extensively and it would be very easy just via phone call to find out what the water use was, came from that area. You're absolutely right. I think we should be a little bit more proactive and the first time this happened in 2016, we set aside money in our, in our budget. This year, it was omitted. I think that's something that we, when we go through the budgetary procedure, that we should look at again. You're absolutely right on that. So I guess the consensus is to move forward, list to regular council. Okay, is there any other additional items on the agenda? No, there's not. So I guess consensus to, to adjourn. Thank you, everyone.